You talking to us?
Okay. All right, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for being here at the second meeting of August 2021. We've already established a quorum. We have some ambassadors from the historic White's Creek High School, if you all would not mind coming to the podium just to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for being here, young people. Please know that you are in front of supporters. Everything that we do is for you. So with that, Dr. Gentry, this is in your district. If you would not mind introducing our ambassadors.
Yes, I have names. All right, so tonight, our ambassadors are from the White's Creek High School, located in District One. We have Yvonne. Please stand. Busain, did I get it right? Nope, okay. I'll talk after this meeting, not so quick next time.
My name is Yvonne Busain.
Busain, okay. Is Yvonne Busain a 12th grader? In the community health pathway. Did I get that much right? Thank you, Yvonne, for being here. We also have Garnett Hyde, also a 12th grader. He's in the law pathway. And Nzinga Jean, 12th grader, also in the law pathway, who actually moderated one of our panels during this past election. And so we thank you for your service in that way as well. So welcome, all of you. Thank you for being here and thank you for representing White's Creek so well. They are escorted by their principal, Dr. Mills, Brian Mills, if you will stand. He is, I keep saying he's new, but he's not. But he is raising the bar. He is going to ensure that the creek does rise and remain at high tide for the duration. And so we thank you for your service. And I see another White's Creek mask back there.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Tiffany Liljohn and I'm the academy coach here at White's Creek High School. I have the absolute pleasure of working with these young people who are doing amazing things for White's Creek. And so we are excited to present in front of you and talk a little bit about the wonderful things that are happening.
Thank you, thank you. Are we doing this now?
Yes.
So you guys will come in the order that you planned, and we're excited to hear what you have to share.
Hello, my name is Yvonne Busain and I'm a senior at White's Creek High School. I am currently part of the Alternative Energy Community Health and Law Academy, specializing in the community health pathway. Here at White's Creek, we have many, many great programs. So one I'd like to talk about today is the dual enrollment program we have partnered with Nashville State. This year, all freshmen that have accepted will now be taking college courses and for all four years. And by the end of their high school career, they will have graduated with a high school diploma and an associate's degree from Nashville State. Additionally, another program that we're using to support these freshmen is the peer mentor program, where chosen few of our seniors, who've already taken a couple of college courses, will help guide and mentor these freshmen through their first year of the dual enrollment program. These two programs are really special and we find them to be really amazing stepping stones to our path to providing an excellent education here at White's Creek. As a White's Creek ambassador, I've had the pleasure to interact with many community partners that we have. And I think that they've left a lasting impact on not only me, but the high school White's Creek student body as well. One of our community partners is Mahari Medical College. And this summer, I had the lucky opportunity to be a participant in a Mahari Medical College internship as a clinical intern. Through this internship, we got to hear from and interview many healthcare professionals in the medical field, hear about their life story, their careers, and their path to education. We also got to learn a lot about community health and what goes into planning community public health events. Thank you so much for this amazing opportunity. And I'd now like to pass it to my fellow ambassador, Garnett Hyde.
Good afternoon. My name is Garnett Hyde. I am a senior ambassador at White's Creek High School. I'm in the academy of Alternative Energy, Community Health, and Law, where I'm in the law pathway. And as a White's Creek student, I have had many opportunities to take on leadership roles. Specifically, I have had the great experiences as a part of the White's Creek High School Band of Distinction, where I am currently the drum major. Through this experience, I have gained understanding and patience as I've learned to teach and guide others. These skills that I had, these are skills that I will take with me throughout my lifetime. As a law pathway at White's Creek, we have implemented leadership structure in the classroom, where I am a team leader in the classroom and am able to assist and positively impact the law pathway learning environment. Through these examples, I have grown mentally as a student and a person in general. I am grateful to be able to obtain and utilize these skills while I'm in high school so I can take them with me beyond the White's Creek life. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this afternoon. And now I present to you Nzinga Jean.
Hello, my name is Nzinga Jean and I am a senior at White's Creek High School. I am in the academy of Alternative Energy, Community Health, and Law. While at White's Creek, I have been an ambassador for three years. I had the opportunity to be shown in depth what it means to be a leader and rise up to the occasion. Some of the things I've done as ambassador was recruitment meetings with feeder schools. I also had to do hub tours, where I introduced our school structure to people coming from different parts of the world. As an ambassador, we also try to help out with any community function or event that's happening at our school. So recently, we helped, last year during COVID, we helped, select few of us helped with passing out of schedules, IDs, and then giving the school supplies. Another example of this was our freshman orientation. This year, we helped tour the school to the incoming freshmen who've never been in the building. While at White's Creek, I had gotten the chance to complete 10 of our college credits so far as a junior. I completed four classes during the summer and one class over the summer. While I was taking my classes during the school year, I had a very good support system because not only did I have my professor from Nashville State, I also had my teacher in the classroom. And on the days I didn't go to the classes with the professor, our teacher stepped in and aided us in just teaching us new things that will help guide us along for the college courses. I'm grateful for the support that they gave me and the support that I get every day while being at White's Creek. And we truly believe that the creek can rise up and will strive to rise up. Thank you.
Anything else y'all want to add? No more icing, no more gravy? That was wonderful. Thank you all so much. Pick your time. Back to back.
Go through there and we'll get you.
You guys did a great job.
Don't stand kind of in the, yeah, perfect.
Please give these young people another round of applause. Please remember what it was like to be a young person and imagine coming and presenting to a board full of educators, full of supporters and parents. So very good job, young people. We appreciate you. With that, we'll move on to governance issues with our consent agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda as listed? Mrs. Poopaw Walker?
I would like to pull, wait a second. Where's page one? A, E, Policy 4.301 and Policy 6.402.
Can you repeat those one more time?
Policy 4.301 and Policy 6.402.
All right, do we have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
I move approval of the agenda, the consent agenda with the approved exceptions.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hands. All right, it's unanimous. So we'll move on to this 4.301 and 4.602. Mrs. Poopaw Walker, would you mind giving an explanation?
Oh, we are going, we had motions to defer point to Policy 4.301 and Policy 6.402 for discussion in executive committee.
Do you, we have to have an executive committee, I mean, executive session on both, right?
Yeah, so that was the request, is that can we do them both in the same executive?
All right, so I'll talk with you, Ms. Revers, and we'll set a date. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to number two, a resolution regarding multicultural education. Mrs. Masters?
Throwing to it, sorry.
Here we are.
At the very end.
And for the viewing public or anyone kind of watching and moving along with us, if you go to our agenda packet that's listed on the website, you can scroll down to the very bottom and you'll see contracts, you'll see MOUs, and you will see in this case, a resolution.
Found it. All right. So should I just read it?
Yes, please.
Okay, so this is a resolution regarding multicultural education. Whereas the Metro Nashville Board of Education believes that multicultural education should promote the recognition of individual and group differences and similarities in order to reduce racism, homophobia, ethnocentrism, and all other forms of prejudice and discrimination, and to facilitate the development of self-esteem as well as respect for others among all students. And whereas more than 70% of Metro Nashville Public Schools students are students of color and the overall student population represents 139 countries of origin. And whereas the Metro Nashville Board of Education believes that educational materials and activities should accurately portray the influences and contributions of ethnic and other minorities, women, and world religions. And whereas the Metro Nashville Board of Education believes that academic freedom, which includes the rights of teachers and learners to explore and discuss divergent points of view, is essential to the teaching profession. And whereas the Metro Nashville Board of Education recognizes that the Tennessee State Social Studies standards require providing students with opportunities to explore current events by drawing connections between the past and modern day, develop and defend their opinions, and analyze multiple points of view. And whereas the Metro Nashville Board of Education believes that in order to achieve racial and social justice, educators must acknowledge the root causes of institutional racism, structural racism, and white privilege. And whereas the Metro Nashville Board of Education, lost my place. The Metro Nashville Public Schools Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion exists to address issues of racism, homophobia, ethnocentrism, and all other forms of prejudice and discrimination within Metro Nashville Public Schools. And whereas, my computer's messing up. All students deserve to see accurate representations of themselves in their education. And learning about the contributions, successes, and challenges of non-white people is critical to long-term educational development and understanding. Now therefore be it resolved that the Metropolitan Nashville Board of Education will advocate for research and implementation of social and educational strategies that foster the eradication of institutional racism and white privilege perpetuated by white supremacy culture. It's hard to read this much with a mask on. Furthermore, stand behind its adoption of curricular materials that adhere to the Tennessee academic standards. Furthermore, stand behind teachers who teach the Tennessee academic standards in a factual manner that represents the truth of this country's history. Furthermore, support and defend teachers' use of materials that incorporate diverse, accurate viewpoints that are representative of the student body in their classrooms. Furthermore, ensure that individual teachers who teach the Tennessee academic standards are not punished for teaching accurate information adopted by the elected Metropolitan Nashville Board of Education on the 24th of August 2021 with this resolution to take immediate effect the public welfare requiring it.
Thank you, Mrs. Masters. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And do I have a second?
A second.
All right, discussion around this resolution?
Makes sense to me.
All right, I will say, I appreciate you bringing this to us, Ms. Masters. All right, go ahead, Mrs. Poopaw Walker.
I just want to thank Ms. Masters for bringing this forward. And I think, you know, this speaks to some concerns that staff have had about what can and cannot be taught to students. There's still outstanding rules that have to come from the Tennessee Department of Education on that. But I will say, while we're talking about anti-critical race theory or critical race theory, we're not talking about school funding when we're talking about critical race theory. We're not talking about student achievement. We're not talking about the well-being of our students. I'm not saying us, I'm saying the universe. And so I want to make sure people understand that it is essential that we create what I call high-trust, low-stress school environments for our children. And that requires seeing them, teaching them, using materials that reflect them, honoring teachers who are trying to do that really well. And so I just stand with this resolution and thank you so much.
So in short, teachers, we have your back. We appreciate you all continuing to reflect diversity in our schools and as you engage with this curriculum authentically with students. And Ms. Masters, I appreciate you bringing this because it shows true allyship and that's something that I want our entire community to really wrap their heads around, that we can't continue to just say things. We can't just talk talks if we're not going to walk them also. So with that being said, all in favor, please raise your hand. All right, it's passed unanimously with one missing. Thank you. We'll move on now to directors' reports. And it's not listed here, but we did have two committee meetings this afternoon. So Mrs. Poopaw Walker and Mrs. Tyler, if you would not mind being prepared to just say a few words at the end of this presentation. Thank you. Dr. Battle?
All right, thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. Tonight, we're looking forward to walking through some of our various plans. But I wanted to start with a brief overview of our 10 ready data and academic acceleration plans that we presented a few weeks ago. On March 13th, 2020, of course, we can all recall, metro schools closed due to the threat of the pandemic. And very soon after that, all of the school districts in Tennessee had closed for what turned out to be the remainder of the year. It was an uncertain and unprecedented time for us all, but our educators and staff were quickly to find alternative ways to connect with their students and their families to ensure they had the resources and support they needed during this emergency situation. We also know that our education system is based primarily around in-person instruction and that the disruptions caused by the pandemic would slow academic growth, which is why, which has been seen throughout the last year in math scores and now in 10 ready data. Families hit the hardest by the pandemic, were often those experiencing poverty because they didn't have immediate access to outside resources, were often the ones furloughed or laid off due to the pandemic recession, or unable to stay home and support their children while working remotely. This all correlated to larger declines in growth for economically disadvantaged populations. Now, to be clear, school districts were told, now to be clear, school districts were told that the 2020-21 T-CAP data would not be used for accountability purposes if we achieved testing rates at 80% or more and we achieved 85% participation rate. Additionally, we did not hold students accountable for their results and end-of-course exams. This is meant to be a baseline for districts and schools to grow from in the future. Please note that only 88% of eligible MMPS students tested and only 86.5% of scheduled 10-ready and end-of-course exams were completed. That actually translates to 6,339 students who did not test and 21,799 scheduled tests that were not completed. A couple of highlights from our T-CAP data includes English II proficiency increased by 1.5%, excuse me, 1.6% and US history proficiency increased by 2.5% since 2019. I mentioned earlier that a primary focus of MMPS is improving current practices. These enhancements for the upcoming school year will accelerate our recovery in meaningful ways. We have identified key enhancements aligned to literacy, numeracy, science, social studies, and personalized learning. We welcome everyone to reference our full 10-ready presentation on our district website, which does a good job of unpacking where we performed with regards to our 10-ready in comparison to the state. A couple of highlights that regarding those enhancements that I want to highlight here includes, for example, that due to our enhancements coming into this school year, a second grader who is learning to read could have an additional 194 hours or equivalent to 30 days of additional literacy support than they would have typically received. Again, this is just additional time and opportunity, which is one half of the two-pronged approach as we're talking about accelerating and then moving and also addressing recovery. So this is another graphic that highlights how we're able to embed those enhancements throughout the school year. I want to call your attention to what all these investments and strategies culminate in. You can see that as we progress from June 2021 through July 2022, that our students' school years bookended by promising scholars. And the year itself is infused with enhancements meant to improve their experiences and their outcomes. Again, for more information, please feel free to review that 10-ready presentation that was shared several days ago and is posted on our website. We walked through, I personally walked through all those enhancements and what we have to look forward to. Again, in summary, we've talked about this. This is about us going back to basics to ensure forward progress and success. We are moving into a period of recovery and then quickly into acceleration. And we've got to get the fundamental inflection points right. We have spent lots of time planning and training around those basic needs and what it's going to take to address recovery and then move in quickly into acceleration. As a reminder, recovery won't happen in a single semester or a single school year. It will take hard work, it will take focus and continued innovations and investments to ensure we're adapting to the needs of our students who were harmed most by the pandemic, while also enhancing our core instruction and foundational skills to increase academic rigor for all of our students beyond the pandemic in ways that will close historic learning gaps among our student groups. All right, so again, those enhancements are in place. We kicked off the school year with them. We are, with a sense of urgency, addressing the needs for recovery. And we will be shifting into acceleration for all of our students to ensure that strong path for success. Now I'm going to shift a bit to talk about our ongoing response to the pandemic. As a reminder, masks are required at all MMPS facilities pursuant to the rules adopted by the Board of Education in consideration of the mayor's executive order for masks at all metro facilities and the recommendations from the CDC, AAP, and state and local health officials. Universal masking remains the best available mitigation strategy outside of vaccinations, which aren't yet available for the majority of our student population. The review of Governor Lee's Executive Order 84 is ongoing. And on Friday, we sent out an update to families with a form that was created, which families could submit to schools for feedback as to their opt-out preferences. We will continue to monitor that situation and provide updates to the board as they become available. Now, as a reminder, here are our COVID mitigation strategies. Number one, universal masking in schools. Social distancing when feasible. And we understand in many circumstances, six feet is not feasible, but to the greatest extent possible is our guidance, along with seating charts, cohorting, and other strategies to limit potential exposures in the school building. Washing of hands, using hand sanitizer, and coughing into your sleeve remain best practices to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 viruses and other illnesses. Our custodial teams will continue using CDC-approved disinfectants to sanitize buildings. Contact tracing and quarantines are an important strategy as well. And I'll get into greater detail about those in just a moment. And last, and quite frankly, most important, vaccinations are the best strategy to reduce the impact of COVID-19 if someone catches it, as well as to reduce the spread. The Pfizer vaccine, which is one that most MMPS employees received earlier this year, has been fully approved by the FDA as of this week. This is important to note for those who may have been hesitant due to its emergency authorized status previously. We are hopeful that the vaccine will be approved for students younger than 12 soon. But we don't know and don't have a firm date from public health authorities on when that might happen. Though we anticipate the Pfizer vaccine will be the first version approved for younger students as it was for our older students. Here's a reminder of our contact tracing protocols. Our contact tracing is run by the health department through our school nurse program. Quarantines are not optional, but required if a student or staff member is identified as a close contact. Those definitions have been updated since last school year. So as a reminder, a close contact is traditionally defined as someone who is within six feet of a person who tests positive for COVID-19 for a period of 15 minutes or more over a 24-hour period. Exceptions to that rule are that in the K-12 environment, students who are more than three feet apart, if universal masking policies are in effect and if the students are both correctly wearing masks, will not be defined as close contacts. Additionally, those who are fully vaccinated, meaning both shots plus two weeks, will not be required to quarantine if they don't exhibit symptoms or test positive. Those who have had a lab-confirmed COVID test indicating they had COVID within 90 days of exposure are also not required to quarantine. We'll continue reporting out on a weekly basis the COVID-19 quarantines and confirmed cases on Monday mornings through our COVID-19 tracking website at mnp.org. Going over the numbers since the start of the school year, from August 9th to August 15th, we had 95 staff isolated or quarantined with 52 confirmed cases. 980 students were isolated or quarantined with 207 confirmed cases. From August 16th to August 22nd, we had 143 staff isolated or quarantined with 67 confirmed cases. 2,879 students isolated or quarantined with 395 confirmed cases. The number of quarantines and isolations represent active, meaning they might roll over week to week. The number of confirmed cases represents notifications to schools that a student or staff member tested positive during the timeframes listed. These are higher than we saw last year when students were in person, though we have a lot more students in our buildings. We will continue to monitor and report the numbers and work with schools that are most heavily impacted to offer support wherever possible. Digging a little deeper into the quarantine procedures. When staff are required to quarantine, they are expected to work remotely unless they are too sick to work, in which case they'll use sick leave. We have and will continue developing a process to give staff the opportunity to access COVID sick leave if the following conditions are met. They have tested positive through a lab-confirmed diagnosis if they have COVID. They have a medical note indicating they are or were not able to work. They have received at least the first dose of the COVID-19 vaccine prior to diagnosis or they have medical documentation indicating that they are ineligible for the COVID-19 vaccine, the reasons for which are extremely limited. This should assure that staff are working when possible, but also being mindful that there are breakthrough cases which can lead to serious illness. And we want to be accommodating to that reality. However, if you have chosen not to get the vaccine to significantly reduce the chances of illness from COVID, then it's not the responsibility of the district to financially compensate you for that decision. And so we will continue to update that process as we move forward. And so we will continue to update that process as we move forward. As for students, they can be counted present if they complete all of their assigned work and their parents verify that the student participated in all instructional activities. This is a minimum set of expectations to be counted for attendance. Please know there may be times when classroom teachers are able to provide additional instructional opportunities to students learning in remote environment, either through synchronous lessons if, for instance, the teacher is also quarantined and is providing instruction remotely through teams to their in-person classroom or an entire class is having to quarantine. Now, let's dive into our E S R three plans, which have been formulated through several weeks and months of stakeholder feedback, including this board, parents, students, staff, and community members, to get us to a place where we're using these historic investments to best meet the needs of all those we serve. We've talked quite a bit about E S R over the last few months, and we are nearing the end of the first finish line, which is the submission of our E S R plans to the state by Friday. There have been many revisions or updated guidance that have come from the state in the last few weeks, months, and actually days to the requirements for this plan. So we have been having to make adjustments up until the last minute and will likely continue to make adjustments through the end of the week to make sure we're in full compliance with their requirements. As a reminder, we have received an allocation of two hundred and seventy-six million dollars in E S R funding provided through the American Recovery Plan, of which forty-three million is automatically reserved for charter schools in Davidson County. We have chosen to spiral forty-eight point eight million directly to schools over the next two fiscal years so that we can meet the unique needs of, of the students in our learning communities, so schools can meet the needs of their student population. To date, we are not aware of any other district who has chosen to allocate a significant portion directly to schools, and we're proud of the principal leaders who have taken on this opportunity and responsibility to give their students and staff what they need to succeed. On the right of the slide, you can see some of the examples of school-level investments that have been made this school year with E S R two point oh funding that was made available to them already. We are also reserving one point eight million dollars for district administration, which is lower than allowed by the rules and law, but we want as much money going to schools and students as possible. Finally, we will walk through the specific investments, but nearly half of our funding is going towards accelerating learning progress, or as the law calls it, learning loss programs. As a note, our E S R plans, one, two, and three, are all subject to future revision based on the changing needs or additional funding streams that become available to offset the E S R investments as well as approval by the state. Our plans for using the E S R funds are broken into four big buckets, which you can see here, and I'll read them just in case it's too small on some of the screens around the room. Build infrastructure. Accelerate academics. Every student known. And grow our people. Here's what we're looking at for building infrastructure. A ten million dollar investment in nurses, providing for additional nurse coverage over the course of the E S R three point oh grant so that we're able to provide COVID nineteen testing, contact tracing, and general health services to students with a nurse in every school. Two point eight million towards hotspot data plans, being able to continue to offer internet connectivity to families who do not have access to the internet. Six hundred and thirty thousand towards software to support one-to-one technology, software that will ensure computers are secure and up to date. Seven million dollars towards expanding community achieves, providing for the expansion of the Community Achieves Program that provides wraparound supports to students and families with the help of community partners. Four thousand and twelve dollars to go towards academic feedback and specifically course and grading alignment support, improving course and grading alignment to alleviate school-level challenges and improve integration and implementation of existing systems like Infinite Campus Academic Planner to better serve students and communicate with families. Two point nine million towards technology support services for staffing and support to maintain the one-to-one student and teacher devices. A one point five million dollar investment towards strategic redesign and sustainable transformation support. This will provide expert support for developing and implementing a strategic multi-year plan to realize the goal of becoming the premier large school district in Tennessee and beyond. Six hundred thousand dollar investment towards community support hubs. This is an extension of the virtual help centers to provide support through community support hubs and strategically located enrollment centers. An eighteen point four million dollar investment in student and teacher laptops, funding an annual one-third replacement of student and teacher laptops to maintain our supply for a one-to-one technology ratio and account for wear, tear, and losses. A five hundred and forty thousand dollar investment to expand our services from our student support department around Title IX support, including staffing a team for investigations in the district to maintain a safe and equitable environment within the M N P S community. A twenty million dollar investment to accelerate metro schools reimagined. This will be to support the district's efforts to align clusters around academic models and pathways, improving student retention and outcomes. A four million dollar investment in indoor air quality to increase facility improvements to provide for enhanced air quality and circulation in our buildings. A six hundred thousand dollar investment in transportation to invest in a recruiter and to increase the number of bus drivers and monitors with innovative retention and recruitment strategies. Now, here are some more details on how we plan to use our E S R dollars to accelerate academics. An eighteen million dollar investment in promising scholars and summer experiences. This is to extend our summer school programming through two thousand and twenty-four to accelerate learning progress of students. A six point six million dollar investment in adaptive intervention platforms. These will be district-wide supports for interventions in literacy and numeracy that can be utilized during personalized learning time for all students. A four hundred thousand dollar investment in post-secondary transition supports, providing support to students in high school to ensure they are college and career-ready. A one point seven million dollar investment in alternative learning center redesign, investing in alternative learning centers to improve student outcomes for those in need of more intensive behavioral or academic support. A seventeen point six million dollar investment in high-quality instructional materials, fully funding curriculum adoption so that every student has access to their own learning materials with a focus on new, high-quality math curriculum materials. A nineteen point, nineteen million dollar investment in accelerating scholars, our High Impact Tutoring Program. High doses tutoring partnership between M N P S, Pencil, and Bright Path to bring community volunteers and paid tutors to the table to support the academic growth of students with an intense, intense focus on first and second, first, second, and third grade literacy and eighth and third, eighth and ninth grade math skills. An eight hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar investment in our Schools of Innovation Support. This will provide additional and continuing support for the Schools of Innovation, particularly our priority schools. A one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar investment in work-based learning support to launch and expand work-based learning opportunities where students earn credit toward graduation and learn valuable skills in a workplace setting. A four million dollar investment to support our performing and visual arts education. This will increase visual and performing arts learning opportunities through in-school and extended learning opportunities. A two point three million dollar investment to support our athletic programs, providing additional support to schools for athletic programs that's shown to improve attendance and student outcomes, with a special emphasis on with this investment on middle school athletics. Numeracy supports. A one point four million dollar investment for additional materials and numeracy coordinator to close proficiency and achievement gaps in math. A one point five million dollar investment in exceptional education supports to give our students with exceptional needs additional support to compensate for challenges caused by the pandemic. A seven hundred thousand dollar investment of comment assessment supports, ensuring we accurately assess learning progress of students to provide additional supports and interventions as necessary. Here we can see more on what we'll do to make sure every student is known. A two million dollar investment in advocacy centers, facility and staff support to provide every elementary school with an advocacy center to help students process emotions and remain on track in their learning progress. You might recall that the majority of our advocacy centers are covered through our operational budget, but we do have a fourteen advocacy centers that are currently outside of the operational budget that we need to continue to fund until recurring funds are available. A three hundred and sixty thousand dollar investment in navigator support and data platform. This is to extend the innovative navigator program to ensure each student has a caring adult checking in on them to meet their social emotional needs. A sixty-eight thousand dollar investment to provide parents and staff with the opportunity to provide feedback that can be used to improve educational services and outcomes. Again, that's a sixty-eight thousand dollar investment in possible pulse checks. A six point one million dollar investment in restorative practice assistance, establishing support for students experiencing behavioral challenges to increase time spent in classrooms and improve student outcomes in middle and high schools. A nine million dollar investment in mental health supports and counselors, addressing the mental health needs of students caused by the pandemic, adverse childhood experiences, and daily life. A four point six million dollar investment in social workers, ensuring that we have a caring adult and trained adults in S E O practices who can ensure children and families have the support they need to be successful. A three hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment in a transition coordinator, a position to supervise and support school-to-work coaches and manage grants focused on the transition of exceptional education students from high school to the workplace. A two point four million dollar investment in translation and interpretation services. These will be contracted services for translation and interpretation to meet the growing needs of our E S L student and parent populations. And a three hundred thousand dollar investment in student council, in a student counseling coordinator to manage and direct student counselors to ensure alignment with district processes and following best practices. And this is what we're looking at doing with our E S R funding in the Grow Our People category. A ten million dollar investment in P D and planning days, giving our educators and our instructional staff and support staff, instructional support staff, the time and resources needed to learn the latest best practices and prepare lessons that meet students' needs. A seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment in our P D redesign, aligning professional development to the needs of students in a way that provides for better academic and S E O outcomes. A two point eight million dollar investment in Hire Forward, hiring a pool of key positions, teachers, and administrators to staff high-impact vacancies quickly to ensure continuity of quality teaching and learning for all students. A one point five million dollar investment in Parent University, reestablishing a parent university program to empower families to take more active roles in their students' education. And a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment in substitute and innovative short-term staffing, identifying and implementing innovative staffing strategies for support and instructional staff to ensure students' needs are being met. We're getting close to submitting our E S R plans, which are due at the end of this week, and your approval of the health and safety plan earlier tonight is an important piece of that. This plan will guide how we use our E S R funds, but I want to make sure you know that we can amend the plan along the way if our needs change, particularly as we're getting our students back in the building in the in-person learning setting. Some more information to come on that. I do want to make sure we end on a celebratory note. I do want to remind the board and those watching of our M N P S Celebration of Schools campaign, where each school day, we are featuring a different school throughout the district to highlight those qualities that make them unique. We encourage everyone to participate in this campaign by wearing their school's colors or a school's clothing item, if you have it, and sharing a memory or great story about them on social media. Today, we are celebrating Kane Ridge Elementary School. Some fun facts about Kane Ridge. The school's mascot is the Owls, which stands for Outstanding Wonderful Leaders and Staff. Kane Ridge was named a twenty-sixteen reward school for student growth and achievement. And Kane Ridge is LEED Civil Certified, which makes it one of the greenest and most sustainable construction projects in the district. You can learn more about Kane Ridge and all of our other wonderful learning communities on our website. So thank you, Madam Chair, for giving me a few minutes to provide an update to the board tonight, and I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much for all of that information, Dr. Battle. Do we have any questions from board members? Go ahead, Ms. Tyler.
Yeah, I just wanted one quick clarification because there's a lot of really great information really fast. So it seemed like you were saying that you were adding COVID leave pay for teachers who have gotten vaccinated and have been told by a doctor that they can't work virtually. That's correct?
That's correct. We're working on that process, but we have to keep in mind that we're trying to create the safety, the right working conditions for our staff, but also how we can keep that continuity of learning for our students. But that will be a part of our process moving forward. Again, vaccinated doctors note that will confirm their inability to work.
Okay, perfect. Just want to make sure that that's out there and people recognize that that is something we are working on. We are hearing you.
Dr. Ginger?
So, we've heard about other districts around us that have had to just shut down, right, for the rest of the week or shut down for days because they've reached that point where they couldn't staff. So do we know what our breaking point is when it comes to teacher absenteeism because of what's going on with the pandemic?
Well, we're tracking that by school, and so every school's capacity looks a little bit different, but we're monitoring that based upon the number of positive cases and quarantines needed. So we will continue to monitor, similar to the way we did last year. We did have two instances where we had to shut down two schools. We're hoping to avoid that this year if at all possible, but those are based upon the staffing structure at those schools and the number of staff members who were to be isolated.
I have a follow-up question, and I always have this, 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 you know, in comment when it comes to Jolton, right? So Jolton being a geographical outlier for us during the winter months, when there's ice, we have had to, no, this is pre-COVID, right, had to not reopen schools, keep the entire district closed because of the one school that was located someplace where there was still ice on the mountain and it wasn't safe for the bus drivers. So if we get to the point where a school's capacity has been reached, right, we can't staff it, we've got to close the school, is that a district-wide decision or is that a school decision? Or do we handle it like we handle inclement weather?
We, it will likely work a little bit different from inclement weather days. The first goal will be to get enough staff there so the continuity of services are there. We do, in this particular case, have an opportunity for individual school closures as opposed to a district closure.
So we're not subject to the same? Okay, thank you.
Yes, but there, there are many considerations. We're still asking some questions, getting some feedback from the state around how they're counting those as your inclement weather days per state law. If we did use a day to revert back to the school being closed, students at home, we would have to use the inclement weather day. And so we're getting clarification on if they will count towards the district or for the individual school.
Mrs. Player-Peters, then Mrs. Masters, and Mrs. Elrod.
The follow-up on the quarantine questions, does that, does that apply to teachers only but or support staff also?
It applies to all employees.
And so if you're quarantined but are not showing severe symptoms, so there's a process for people to work virtually or?
Yes, there's a process for all employees to work remotely if needed.
Okay. And then if they're, oh, so if they're working remotely, then they would not need to use their sick time because they are working, which is working remotely at their own, at their quarantine? Okay.
Mrs. Masters?
Thanks. So are we still providing medical accommodations for teachers who request them? And given that now we know even if you're vaccinated, you still can contract the virus and I, so I was just wondering, are we still accepting those accommodation requests?
Melissa Roberts, could you come up to the podium? But there have been no changes in our medical accommodations process.
So the federal statute that provided for leave expired at the end of last year, so the typical A D A process would kick, kick in to make general reasonable accommodations.
Okay, so teachers that are interested in pursuing a medical accommodation because of whatever underlying condition or pregnancy or whatever, they can still ask for that in light of COVID conditions?
So they would need to begin the interactive process by reaching out to the Workplace Safety Office, and then that office works with individuals. safety office, and then that office works with individuals to determine what accommodations may be reasonable. It's hard to speculate on what would qualify, what wouldn't qualify, but generally speaking, that's the process under the ADA.
Okay. Okay. And then another question about students and quarantining. So, if a student, at this point, if a student is symptomatic and they choose to go get a COVID test, there's a backlog, and it can sometimes take three or four days now to get the results of what was previously a 24-hour test. So, during that period of time, the student may not feel sick anymore, be, feel well enough to go to school, but they're not technically in quarantine. They don't want to go back to school until they get the test result. Can they be counted as present and do their work virtually while they're waiting for that test result?
I think I'm following your question. Mr. Clay, could you approach the podium, please? And I'll piggyback if need be.
For the answer about the testing, one thing I want to point out, I've noticed a lot of community conversation. Our school nurses are equipped with tests currently, and so they have rapid tests, they can administer those in school easily to be able to do that. I think you may be referencing community tests.
I'm kind of talking about sort of a unique situation, actually not that unique. It's happening a lot where, you know, your kid wakes up, they have a stomachache or headache, you take them to Walgreens for a test, because you're not going to take them to school for a test because they're symptomatic. You're waiting for the results of the test for three or four days. Over the course of that time, while you're being a responsible parent, trying to, you know, not send a kid who's a little sick, but under normal circumstances, probably not so sick that they wouldn't have gone to school. Can they learn during that period of time?
What, it sounds like you're referring to is, in a typical year, if a student had any of these like symptoms, we would ask them to stay home as well. In your case, what you're saying is that they're also sent home waiting on a test. So, is your question how they will be marked attendance-wise? Okay. Dr. Springer, would you approach the podium, please?
I know it sounds like a sort of really specific, but it is happening, I think, a lot among those who are trying to get out whether or not they have it.
Sure. So, the state law and the state board rules only allow us to count a child as present that is currently under quarantine. We do have a variety of options. Parents can avail themselves to excuse the absence while they're waiting for that, and we would certainly encourage them to please keep a child that may be symptomatic at home and to do that even if it were to be an excused absence. Now, through the Office of Academics, we're going, we can provide work in school. We can provide a similar level of service. As far as being able to count them as present, though, I will have to defer to Dr. Springer's if she's aware of something that I'm not, but the state statute we're currently using only allows for it in quarantine, I believe, at this point.
Yeah, that's correct. Correct.
I mean, can a, can a parent say, my child, you know, was symptomatic and we're waiting for a test result, and therefore we need to quarantine? Can we somehow qualify that student under that circumstance as?
Could it be retroactive?
Right, yeah. As self-quarantine.
So, I would think we would need to follow up, possibly, and get some guidance from others to determine what flexibilities we have within that to do that, but we can certainly, and we would want to do that as well. Obviously, being able to count the children as present and participating is an important aspect and one of our goals. So, we can certainly follow up and see what flexibility there is there. Based on our current interpretation, I'm not aware of any, but it doesn't mean, we can certainly seek additional.
So, really, does it come down to whether the district sent you home to quarantine versus self-quarantine?
Or the health, or our nurses via the health department.
Well, yes, somebody sending you home, determining you need to quarantine versus you making the decision to self-quarantine. Okay.
But I certainly don't want us to discourage people who think their child needs to have a test for whatever reason from keeping them home, I guess is what I'm getting at.
And we know for a fact that those can be excused absences, but we also have to align our attendance policy to the state policy. And right now, the only leeway that I'm aware of is being able to mark a student present who has been quarantined by the school via the school nurse and health department.
All right, Mrs. Elrod, then Mrs. Tyler, and then back to Mrs. Player Peters.
Thank you. My questions are about our slide of mini-investments. So, in response to the exceptional education supports under Accelerate Academics, is that for compensatory services or is that for additional services in light of potential loss or gains that we need to consider from last year?
Dr. Bellamy, you can approach the podium, please.
We pulled a slide back up in question. I'm sorry, I don't have, right, I don't have the presentation in front of me.
Good accelerating academics.
Yes, it's the second column, and it's the second to bottom bullet point.
Sure. So, the exceptional education supports there, the variety of those supports are going to be more along the line, not necessarily compensatory services. We'll fit compensatory services in as required by law into the school day to the greatest extent possible and do that through a lot of service providers we already have. Based on the IEP process, that the IEP team is who determines what amount of compensatory services may or may not be needed. And through our implementation of CLIPS last year, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, I could work with Deb McAdams to determine what those services were needed and what our plan of attack for that was. ESSR funds were more allocated to accelerating recovery of special, of all students, and in this case, exceptional ed students, rather than just bucketing these funds for compensatory services.
Okay. So, it's for additional services on top of any type of required compensatory services?
Correct. Because compensatory service is something we're, again, we're required to do in a normal year if something has required it, and so these would be in addition to.
And specifically around compliance of implementing the IEP in the ways that will help and support students' recovery and acceleration.
Got it. Are we currently working underneath those CLIPS or there are IEPs now that we are not in remote?
We're using IEPs.
Okay. My next questions, which are about, let's see, I'm trying to make sure I have the right column, I'm so sorry. It is under the every student known column for translation, interpretation, and also for the mental health support. Do we know after these investments what our ratios will be for translators per student? Like, how much we're reducing that? Or our psychology ratios and how we're reducing those? Do we know what those numbers will be?
They will cross a couple of different departments. So, Hank, if you want to take on the translators, interpreters, and then Dr. Bellamy, if you want to take on the school psychologists.
So, translators and interpreters have recently moved back to Molly Hagewood, who is our Director of EL, works in the Division of Schools now. So, I believe we're adding about 22 positions, and I don't want to quote these numbers exactly, but that'll, that'll increase based off the last numbers I saw, by about 30% the amount of translators we have for these positions right now to provide immediate service to our families in need. And then your question about school psychologists, we were fortunate to get seven school psychologists positioned in the budget. We are less fortunate in being able to hire them currently as they're very few available in the state of Tennessee. And so, our special ed department, our exceptional education department, has been working very aggressively with HR to look at different possibilities of using that generous funding we received in our operating budget to, to attract school psychologists back to Metro that may have left us, or we've even reached out and done some research, asking psychologists in surrounding counties what may make Metro an attractive place to make a permanent move to. We also look at contracts for that work. Unfortunately, our organizations we contract with are also staffed at a shortage. So, we're very blessed to have that money. We're working very aggressively to make sure that we're, our students are benefiting from it, but those additional psychologists and all that funding have allowed us to really close the gap where we were lagging behind on our evaluations. Most recently, the most recent update I got from Deb McAdams and her department was we have gone from having 600 outstanding evaluations to a little over 150, I believe, was the last number I got a couple of weeks ago. So, it's certainly going a long way to make sure we're closing that compliance gap.
I know that reducing our ratio of psychologists and translators has been an ongoing want for us for our budget, so I'm glad that that was a priority within our ESSR funds. I also want to say that I am glad to hear that our bus drivers and having monitors and a potential recruiter just for those positions is really important. As we all probably know, the beginning of the school year, that is a common discussion to hear from families about just bus concerns in general. This year is probably just an exaggerated year of that, for sure. And so, I think an additional or just specific recruiter for those positions, because they are so exceptionally hard to find, particularly in our urban area, to not only recruit and to retain, I think that's a really good use of dollars, and so I'm glad to hear that. And then my last question, and I'm sorry, as you can see, I have so many notes, y'all, you just can't see them all, is on the build infrastructure column, we had information about, I may be in the wrong place on that one. It is about the realignment of MMPS Reimagined and working within the clusters. Yes, acceleration of Metro Schools Reimagine the $20 million for the alignment of clusters. Do we have any updated timelines on those alignment of clusters or any new information to share with families?
We don't have any updates to date. What we are looking at in that acceleration of our uniform strategies across all of our clusters. Again, we will be submitting this later this week, and it is pending approval for us to be able to move on, at which time, we've already started working, but at which time, once we know the funds available and the timeline there, we can begin that acceleration.
Got it. Thank you.
Mrs. Tyler?
Yes, I, so I know last year, part of the big push towards making every student known was really opening up the support hub to the, to the schools and having members of the formal, formerly-known central office as the support hub going out to our schools. Is that something that has continued into this school year?
Yes, it is, in a different structure from last year. Last year, we were asking for all hands on deck in a, in a very frequent manner. This year, we have continued on, and Dr. Barnes, if you want to add anything, feel free. We've continued on with that initiative with continuity and which schools our support hub leaders are connected to, and they are getting out and making contact on a weekly basis, but physically less frequent than they were this past year. So, here's an example. On the first day of school, we had one of our instructional technology leads who was out supporting her school. I was visiting the school, and she literally had a class of her own and was helping them navigate their first day, making sure that they were getting settled in. And so, as opposed to her being at the support hub, she was at the school and really just plugging in and supporting the school leadership team where there were needs. So, that initiative has continued, again, in a little bit of a different structure. Every support hub member has essentially adopted a school, and we have a structured way of making contact with the principal and then being on site across a month's time throughout the year.
And so, I know sometimes things come up quickly. One of my district schools that my own children attend is Herbert Valley Elementary, and it's been one of the hardest-hit schools right now with positive COVID cases, unfortunately. And there was a point in time where all of the office staff was out on quarantine, all of them. And yes, and they were still, and the nurse was doing something else with her, and our, the staff that was there was very overwhelmed with contact tracing and trying to keep the day-to-day operations going. Is there a way for somebody to reach out and ask for help if it's before one of the check-in days? Does that make sense?
Absolutely. We are in constant, come on up, Dr. Bellamy.
I just, I know, and I don't want to say, I mean, I know that the people that are working at Herbert Valley are just absolutely phenomenal, and I could not be more proud of that school. But I also know that sometimes it's hard to ask for help when you're in the middle of it, and so.
And let me be clear about this, and I'll kick it over to you, Dr. Bellamy. When it comes to the quarantining process, particularly from individual to class or staff, the green light doesn't happen on what we do next without the support of the support hub. So, those conversations happen immediately, notification likewise, the notifications that come to the board. But Dr. Bellamy can talk about that avenue of communication and the supports that are being made available to our schools to help keep the continuity of operations going.
In the case of something like you're explaining, Principal Gleason, A, did a fantastic job, was doing cafeteria duty all last week because her office staff typically does jobs like that. Mr. Ha, her executive director, stays in touch with, all my executive directors stay in touch with their schools on a daily basis, so they're the first point of contact. So, Chad was very well aware, or Mr. Ha, I should say, was very well aware of the strain that Principal Gleason was under and was advocating to me and then to the support hub in ways that we needed. So, there's a strong chain of communication, and the executive director is always the first stop for that. And then, again, I have several structures where they report to me if they need additional help, whether it, whether it's, sometimes I reach out to Dr. Barnes, and we provide additional substitutes even for positions you would normally get them for or things of that nature. So, again, very proud of the staff there for what they went, went through that first, that first week of school. Mr. Ha for his support of them, and Principal Gleason, they did a great job.
Oh, yes. I mean, the care that they've taken of those students and the staff there, it's just, I, like I said, I could not ask for anything better, and I've been very proud to be a hound dog parent. And then, I guess, so a completely separate question now is, if, talking about the, looking at the ability to try to fund the COVID pay for people who meet the strict, the rules that you guys are kind of setting up around that in order to be able to meet that need, would that be something that could, once that decision has been made and we have gotten the funding for it, would that be also retroactive? So, somebody who had to take some of their sick leave but was vaccinated, and their doctor said, you can't come into work, you can't work virtually for whatever reason, is that?
Considering we started school on August 10th, I don't see a reason why we could not do that, but.
I figured. I just wanted to make sure that that was.
Well, we'll definitely review it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have Mrs. Player Peters, then Mrs. Masters, Mrs. Poopa Walker, and Mr. Little.
I had a question, a question from an employee asking about testing. So, if an employee is exposed, they can go to the school nurse for testing?
Mr. Clay.
And if they're a non-school-based employee, can they go, where can they go to get testing, I guess, within the district? Does that make sense?
Thank you, Dr. Battle, thank you. So, yes, communicate with that employee directly, and there are school nurses that non-students and non-teachers can use at the school-based site. And then, in addition to that, Dr. Springer's team set up a drive-through testing here on some mornings that they can come through and get that test as well as request on-demand if that's swayed.
Okay.
All right, Mrs. Masters?
Thank you. I just, I wanted a little clarification about how a quarantined student can go about getting in touch with a teacher through the virtual school to provide them with instructional assistance. I know Abigail's kids are doing that right now, but.
That's, it's a great question and a great opportunity for me to give a good plug to our school, our supports, our staff at Virtual School. They've done a fantastic job of providing wraparound opportunities. So, there are drop-in hours, office hours. I mean, you can literally go into a link on their website, and it's right at the touch of a button. We've recently released a video, about a four-minute video through my executive directors to all principals, that the expectation is when a child goes into quarantine with the letters and the other things they're given, that they're given a link to this video that explains step-by-step how to go to the virtual school webpage, what you click on, depending on what grade your child's in, and whether you want to come to standing office hours where there might be multiple children there asking for help, or whether you want a one-to-one appointment. Additionally, Sean Brastid has been helping us out, and we've worked through a communication that I, we hope will be released later this week that will take you through the entire process beginning to end. So, what happens, you've been notified that you're quarantined, what happens next, whether it's attendance protocols, how do I get counted present, how do I get my work in school, and how do I get support from the virtual school? So, we have both of those resources that we've been trying to aggressively push out, that I'll look to see more communication on later this week for the full package, but all principals should already have access to that video. And so, any family listening, my first step would say, reach out to your principal or reach out to, to Kelby Garner, the executive principal at MMPS Virtual School through email, and she will connect you to those resources very quickly.
So, this is, this is a good follow-up to that. I'm very glad to hear that, that communication is going to go out to parents that sort of just like step-by-step, you're, you're in quarantine, what now? Because our school nurses are drowning. They're just, it's, it's so overwhelming. And I know, I got, I got the close contact call as a parent, too, and I had questions, and then I started feeling kind of bad, like, oh, I'm keeping this nurse on the phone, asking her all of these questions. So, I think to have that clear communication out to parents so that nurses aren't having to answer all of those questions every time, I'm just also wondering about what can we do right now to get help, not even necessarily, you know, medical help, just, you know, some sort of help with making the calls for the, for the contacts, help to sort of expedite the process of everything the nurses are having to do, from the testing to the calling to the paperwork, to all of it.
Well, the first line here is. Well, the first line here is that when it comes to the academic supports, the first line of defense is going to be the teacher, not the teacher, counselor, principal. So it's not the nurse's responsibility to share all that information. We've got a process in place for those communications on that end. We are still in the process, while we are funding a nurse for every school, we're still, just like bus drivers, just like our teachers, just like our support staff, we're still in the process of filling those positions. And so part of the supports that we've pushed out to our school teams are doing things like, you know, making sure that you have your cohort of students aligned, your seating charts, directory. So we're making sure that we're streamlining, streamlining all of those supports for our nurses to help expedite the process. But again, we're seeing numbers like we did not see last year with fewer students in our buildings. And I don't think anybody was anticipating that with this new variant, that we will see the level of, seeing just how transmissible this variant is, and what's requiring for quarantining and the number of positive cases. And so we're continuing to monitor and adjust. Some of those strategies are helping expedite those contacts being made, and of course, the instructional supports come directly from the teacher and/or the principal.
Dr. Bellamy, if I could just add that the principals are oftentimes helping out with contact tracing when the nurses become overwhelmed, and Dr. Springer's department and mine work pretty closely, pretty often. I speak with Dr. Bull quite often about what her nurses are experiencing, what they need, and we work with the executive directors to try to support, in particular, when there's a hotspot. A great example is through one of our SOIEDs, Renita Perry, has worked with all of her principals, and they have binders now with seating charts in them. So instead of having the nurse having to track it down, it's right there for her so that she's not having to reach out a variety of ways. And that's a strategy that became shared at my executive director meeting, and we've tried to disseminate out so that we can continue to just help our nurses as they continue to be on the front lines of this.
And this is a shift in structure as well, because in previous months, we did have additional COVID support on the ground, and so we're having to shift in those roles and responsibilities.
Can we start reporting the data, not just by school, but by grade level?
Melissa, approach the podium, thank you.
So under FERPA, we have to protect student information. So the more granular you get, the more likely it is that you could identify students that had tested positive. And so to keep it, to protect student privacy, we've done it at the school level.
Okay. I might follow up with you about that.
Are you asking, get rid of the school, and just tell me, across the district, how many third graders, fourth graders?
No, I mean, I think school level.
Like, instead of everybody in one school getting a note saying, somebody has been, you know, and you would have already been contacted, and just sending it to just the third grade in that school where there was a positive?
Or really, I just want to know. You know.
And that's usually what we get from parents, and I can understand that, but the U.S. Department of Education put out guidance.
I was trying to help you.
Well, I'll tell you, I want to know by grade level, because I'm really interested, for example, in a middle school, where half the population typically is eligible for the vaccine and half is not, I would like to sort of dig in on that breakdown of, you know, like, my eighth grader's vaxxed and had a close contact and didn't have to quarantine, because he's vaxxed and masked and asymptomatic. So I would like to see what that breakdown looks like, because I feel like sometimes seeing that sort of data in black and white in front of you can, might help to incentivize some eligible for the vaccine. I don't know. All right. That's all I've got for you.
All right. Jenny?
Frida was next. No, I was next.
I have you and then John.
He made that up.
Okay.
So, first of all, I think this is amazing that we're able to deploy all these resources. I'm still worried about us hiring a lot of people that we can't keep. So I know y'all are paying attention to that, but I just really, when you think about advocacy centers and mental health supports and social workers and, you know.
Most of those supports, to your point, and keeping our eye on that, are contracted services. So our ability to scale up, we did have to analyze where those contracted services could be and who we can partner with to provide those to avoid, like you said, some of those staffing and funding cliffs that we want to try to avoid.
Very excited to see Parent University on here. I used to help run that program. So I don't know if there's any thought about how that would be deployed. I think it's more important than ever. Obviously, it used to be classes for parents and so forth and so on, but I think it could also be an important tool, maybe for PAC or maybe for, I don't know. And so I'm just wondering, will you guys create sort of a department or staff it up, or how is that going to look?
We're definitely planning to staff it up. It could, there will be contracted services as well. And we use the term Parent University because of the success we've had, but we're also innovating in this space, understanding that it might not need to look exactly the way that it did in the past, but reassessing around, one, our modes of being able to connect with one another, but also that some of the needs have shifted and changed. And is there an opportunity to do more family opportunities with student and parent? I mean, we're, we want to be very innovative around how we deploy Parent University and being, but being very strategic about what we're trying to accomplish, given our focus outcomes.
So I know that there are a lot of people talking about how it's hard to get tested, people trying to get their family tested, and I don't know that people want to bring a child who's been exposed into school to be tested. Is there a world where these community support hubs, where people have been going for laptop help, could become a place where testing could occur so that this family doesn't have to go to the school, but could go to a place where there's already?
We will definitely take that under advisement. It might be another, I mean, I know we're trying to capture some trend data right now about how often or frequently there'd be access, but that's something that our team can look into.
Are people still going there for help? I figured they would when we were remote and people, kids were not in school, but now that they're in school, are people still coming to them?
Yes, because we've expanded the reach of those community hubs for not just to be around technology, but almost kind of a one-stop-shop enrollment, nutrition services, whatever the need may be, we wanted to staff those so that we're meeting our families where they are and providing those resources.
And then the last thing I'll say is, I'm hoping that we are, I'm assuming that Dr. Randolph is doing this, but we're putting measures in place to know if this stuff pays off, what's working, what's not working, year to year, you know?
Yes, of course, as Dr. Randolph is coming to the podium, one of our signature initiatives is a practice partnership. If you want to talk a little bit about it, we're going to be kicking it off formally in just a few weeks, so.
All right, several things going on there. Thank you for the question. Yes, I mean, we're working to be very thoughtful in the front end of setting up program evaluation so we can iterate along the way, what's working, what's not, and how do we adjust. So several things going on. Dr. Battle just mentioned the research-practice partnership with Vanderbilt, which is launching. Vanderbilt has skin in the game, and we have skin in the game, really excited about that work and working on that together. We also are looking, we're hiring a position for Dr. Tangus's team to focus just on ESAR. It will be a short-term grant-funded position, not atypical on that team. Dr. Tangus could speak to that, but certainly funding that. We also are, have a couple of other university partners working on specific projects with us, like tutoring and the literacy framework work. So we're leveraging, just like across the board, outside partnerships and expertise as well as internal ability to do those things.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Little?
And Jenny, you took the words right out of my mouth. So the question we asked you is about the best use practices. I see 48 million for school, I guess it's school-based budgeting light? Like, how do we determine what works so we can use those best use practices for the monies given to the school?
So you're talking specifically about the spiral?
Yes, ma'am.
So from ESAR II, we spiraled down about $24 million through all of our engagement. It's been pretty overwhelming that that practice should be continued. So we're, right now, budgeting around $48 million to spiral directly to schools. What's the most important here is that we have worked extremely hard and with some other researches around those best practices, the high-yield strategies that schools should be leveraging their funds for. So we've provided kind of a guidance document, if you will, with the guardrails around what those best practices are, where they help move the needle and the buckets that you see in order for us to support, but also monitor the impact on student outcomes. It's very important for us to think about this in terms of getting those dollars and resources closest to our students and schools, so that while we're thinking about district strategy, we have also very unique school strategy around meeting the unique needs of their students and their, and their learning community. So it's kind of a twofold approach, district strategy, because we know that there are some needs that are consistent and district-wise, but we also have some various school-specific needs that we want to make sure we're able to address those challenges. So those guardrails are there, and we have an opportunity with our facilitators and our executive directors who are coaching our principals and monitoring that impact.
Okay, thank you. And just a couple of follow-ups for the building infrastructure, accelerate academics, the indoor air quality, which I was excited to see on here, because I just thought that was a really good opportunity. Like, how would, how would that flow out, and how does that look? Because I know a lot of people asked about, are we updating our air systems?
I'll invite Dr. Randolph back to the podium, but I do want to remind us that this is a second investment for enhancements in this space. So ESAR II, we had some, two, one?
11.2 million in ESAR II, that were about 10 projects. This will add more to that. So they're around improved airflow and HVAC projects at schools where the.
And how do you guys determine which schools get what?
So facilities has, as you can imagine, some extensive lists of needs, and they have prioritized those needs. There's a couple of things to remember around facilities. One is, we've got to be able to complete the project in the time of the grant, which is actually quite challenging. We were on a call with some other districts who've had to abandon some of the facilities projects that they wanted because of construction costs and the timeline of some of these things. So we've been very thoughtful about things we can actually get done in the timeframe before June 24. So that was, that's one of the criteria as well, so need, and then can we accomplish it in the time allowed?
And also, kudos to our facilities team. If you're thinking about our capital needs assessment, that we had a plan that we could really leverage to determine where the greatest needs were first and then move them forward.
And then, last question is, we, like, how do we see the plans? Because these are really good, like, post-secondary transition support, work-based learning support. Like, what's the best way to utilize and look at those plans, just so we can be familiar with how the district's going to operate?
So one thing this board should be extremely proud of, and you might remember that one document from our board retreat, we color-coded what kind of source of funds we were leveraging to move our aspirational budget forward. If you look back at your aspirational budget, you're going to see lots of investments through our ESAR dollars, which are tied directly to our focus outcomes, our core tenets, our signature initiatives for our students on behalf of the district. So that's the first place to look. We're also very responsive to our stakeholder engagement, particularly around our spiral to our schools and where those funds might be best used. So if you go back to that aspirational budget and those documents, you will see a lot around the theories of action. We went back and reviewed those against where we are today, and they are all very relevant, and our needs for our district as we move forward.
Other questions?
All right, we have Mrs. Masters, Mrs. Player Peters, and this will be our last round. And then, Mrs. Tyler.
Oh, I think.
Oh, sorry about that. Okay, then, sorry. Mrs. Player Peters, and then Mrs. Tyler.
Now that the vaccine has been FDA-approved, for those employees who didn't, can we consider either having some partnerships with the Department of Health to do a vaccine drive and then have some leeway, like voting, like, they can take some time during the day to do it? Is that something that can be considered as a partnership to do that, to make sure we have most staff do it? And then, if they do have side effects, how can I fit into the quarantine leave or sick leave if there's effects from that?
Well, it's the same process we've been using since, I think it was March, when we were prioritized for the vaccine. We've even been pretty innovative and creative of having some clinics and some kind of roving opportunities to limit the time for even travel for our employees. And so I think we, it was mentioned earlier about the testing site. So we are continuing to be innovative around how we can get access to our employees to limit, you know, any extra challenges or barriers to them getting the vaccine. And so we'll continue that, particularly on the heels of that fully, of Pfizer ban fully approved.
And then, I was going to let Mr. Little know that we've been doing, with the capital needs, that we haven't waited for ESAR funds to do work on our schools to improve ventilation, but we have been leveraging the funds that already exist, getting such a large investment in our capital needs fund by the city council last year was really helpful. We upgraded all of our existing HVAC units to have the highest MIR filters that they could handle. I think it's just really important that the public knows that we are well aware that ventilation is extremely important, and it is something that we are really looking into and have been. And so although we are spending a lot of ESAR funds looking at HVACs, we're also spending capital needs funds on that, too. So that's not something we've been ignoring, it's something that has been on the radar and something we have been taking care of all along. And then just kind of to follow up with that, I know every school is a little different just with location and the unique populations that attend each one. And I know that I've had several questions from different people about what is the ability of schools to have outdoor classes or to have outdoor lunch? And I have been saying that's probably a building-level decision based on the different things that are going on there, but if you could kind of give us a little bit of overview on what could we do that, with the weather not being terrible at the moment? Is there any sort of guidance that you're giving principals about that?
It's highly encouraged. I mean, anytime that we can get our students outdoors, whether it be for recess or PE or for lunch, I mean, every building is different, the needs are unique, so those are building-level decisions, but they're decisions that we fully support with the right measures in place for our students. So highly encouraged, whenever possible, when feasible, to get our students from the indoor setting to the outdoor setting.
And then, I know sometimes a part of the issue with allowing an outdoor lunch is you still have students that are in the cafeteria, but you also want to allow students. So then you become staffing, yes. Is that something that, if the outdoor area were to have parent volunteers to come, is that something that we would be okay allowing them to oversee an outdoor lunch and not go in the building?
One of our mitigation strategies, which is in alignment to all of the health guidelines, is to limit visitors in schools. So what school teams are doing is leveraging their staff as much as possible. We by law have to have, our teachers have to, unless they volunteer not to, they are afforded a duty-free lunch, but also limits the amount of supervision. So I've personally seen schools getting creative and innovative. It might not be every day, it could be every other day, depending on the grade level, the size of the school, but it is definitely, if a school is offering an opportunity for outdoor lunch, we fully support them in doing so. But they have to do so based upon their staffing needs, and of course, we're still pushing our support hub folks into schools to help alleviate that as much as possible. In fact, we had our exceptional education lead, the principal, was out at one of our exceptional education schools, and she went out and was the principal for not only a day, but I believe a few days, to support them. So we're trying to do everything we can to keep those, that continuity of operations, but also recognizing that it's good for mitigation strategy as well to be outdoors as often and frequently as we can.
Yes, yes, and I definitely agree. It is, we cannot legally ask our teachers to take on lunch duty. That is part of our MOU, I want to make that clear. That is not on the teacher's shoulders to take care of.
But we are doing things indoors, like, we're feasible, spacing our students out, monitoring, you know, when they're eating versus putting their mask back on. So there are things that, picking up kind of a grab-and-go lunch in some cases. So when they're not able to go outdoors, there are strategies that we're encouraging and recommending our schools execute upon indoors.
And then for our schools that have portables, I know that there's a very different set of parameters around ventilations in a portable than there is inside a school. Do we have any sort of mitigation policies to help with portable ventilation? I know some of their windows don't open at all, period, and some of them can slide. It just depends on the actual portable itself. So just, I don't know, is that something that we have considered? Do we have plans to help with ventilation in portables?
I'll have to defer to. I'll have to defer to our facilities team. There is one advantage here. There's usually a path outdoors getting to the portable. But David Prophet, if there's anything else you want to add in particular or specifically around portables?
With regard to portables, they each have their own self-contained wall units. Those wall units do draw inside air or outside air in to help recirculate air or provide air changes. That's what the CDC talks about, is air changes, not circulating air, but bringing in fresh air. They have their own system of doing that with those through-wall units that we already have. But we don't open windows.
Yeah, I didn't think so. None of the portables I ever taught in let me open windows.
Right. And, but that's the way they work.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. That's helpful. All right, I just, and I just wanted to say before we move on, I just, I'm very pleased to see that you have listened to so much input from teachers and parents and from us about the things that we think are necessary as well as talking to experts in the area, like Mr. Prophet, who understands how ventilation works in all of our schools and what is feasible for us to actually do. I just, I can see that the priorities you guys have set are really putting our students first and the safety first. And I just wanted to let you know that I see that, I appreciate that. I like being able to see that we understand that there's an issue staffing buses, so we're doing that. And we understand that we need to keep up with ventilation, so we've got that on here, that we know that mental health is extremely important. So we are making specific investments in those things. And so I just, you guys are doing a great job trying to meet all the needs that we possibly can with money that is finite, even though it seems like a lot. It's finite and it's one time. So I appreciate that and I see that, and thank you.
All right, I just have a couple of questions, if you don't mind, Dr. Battle. First, would you mind highlighting some of the important dates on this ESER Plan submission timeline? When is it due? Are there any other opportunities for community members at large to ask questions or just to review the plan?
Dr. Randolph, do you mind approaching the podium, please, and responding?
I'm happy to report that it's due Friday. And yes, it's up on the website. What You Saw Tonight is available. Anyone can go and look at it. And there is an email address, eser@mmps.org, that people can submit questions or comments to. But I will remind, I mean, Dr. Battle did a great job of underlining that we will have hopefully an approved plan by October 1st. But like, to use ESER II as an example, we've had four approved revisions since we submitted. So what we submit with changes or new needs are identified, or we will be able to revise. So it is not something that is ever set in stone.
Oh, please know that I'm not pushing back. I love the plan and the case.
Pending approval.
Pending approval, that's right.
Well, and also your question about engagement, we've had multiple engagement opportunities. That's also highlighted on our web, on our checklist as required by the ESER Plan. So multiple stakeholders, surveys, we've tried to gather as much feedback as we could.
Certainly. Thank you for that. How are we looking with hiring nurses? Have we met whatever needs we had? Are we still in the process of looking for nurses? You know, and we have that partnership with Metro Health, but where do we stand?
We're still in the process of hiring nurses. I don't have the numbers in front of me, but that is ongoing and will continue to be a priority for us as well. As a matter of fact, I can probably answer this question across the board. We are still not in our ideal space for staffing across the board, but the team is plugging in and pushing through in so many ways to make sure all of the needs are covered. This was why it was also important for our transformation into our Support Hub model, because it is requiring all of us to do what's necessary to keep our students in person, learning, and safe.
And lastly, just what do you need from us outside of spreading the good news, reminding community members and parents about the use of ESER dollars and what's to come? I mean, just how else can we help?
I think, you know, continuing to, we have, what you see in this plan, what you have heard and engaged with in our signature initiatives are research-based strategies. They're the practices that we should be leveraging, and so continuing to communicate those. We need continued partnerships. So if you have community partners or members or leaders who are interested in helping and supporting any of these initiatives, please send them our way. We'll be happy to connect them. For instance, our goal is to tutor up to 7,000 students. We need volunteers. We need community partnerships to help us do that. And as you've heard through our ESER Plan, a lot of what we're doing will be relying on some contracted services. So we've been doing some asset mapping about around what might be there, the partners who've done great work with us and our students. But if you see opportunities for partnership that helps us extend every dollar as far as we can to get significant impact for our students, please, please reach out. We want to talk to whomever. We want to point them in the right direction for, if they want to apply, to help. But any of that advocacy definitely will go a long way. I think this is also a critical time for us to be paying attention to policies and other legislation that might be coming down the pipe later. We want to make sure that we're protecting our ability to do what's best for our students and on behalf of our staff. So again, awareness around what might be coming down the pipe in that piece, but anybody who can partner with us around these research-based strategies to address the recovery needs of our students and also to accelerate their progress, we are open to.
I love the way you phrase that, protecting our ability to do what's best for kids. So thank you, thank you, thank you. But that, well, I'll kick it to Mrs. Tyler, if you wouldn't mind briefly recapping our Teaching and Learning Committee, and then Mrs. Poopa Walker, if you would recap governance.
Yes. So we had a focus specifically for the Teaching and Learning Committee on Advanced Academics. And we went over all of the programs that we offer at all different levels, starting with the Encore Gate Program, the Gifted and Talented Education Program for our younger students, and then up into the high school level of AP classes, IB schools, dual enrollment, dual credits, and all the different ways that we can offer advanced academics to every student in our, in Metro. So to kind of push excellence.
Thank you. Mrs. Poopa Walker?
Dr. Sevier, ably walked us through 17 policies that needed to be amended or updated and adopted. We deferred on two policies, Policy 4.301 on inter-scholastic athletics and on Policy 6.402 on physical examinations and immunizations. And we will pick those up in an executive session.
And for the viewing community, you can go to our website, look at our agenda for today, and you will see these different governance documents, these new policies listed in that packet. So don't feel like you're left out of the conversation. With that, we're going to move on to announcements. We'll start down here with Mrs. Tyler.
Just another pitch, I said it last time, I'll say it again. If you are interested in helping out in our schools, if you are willing to be a high-dose tutor, you can go to pencilsforschools.org/volunteer. And if you don't feel comfortable going into a classroom to help tutor, then you could always do virtual videos, which also you could do through Pencil, same address, So we need all the support we can get, and we appreciate everybody being willing to support the community as much as you can.
Thank you. Mrs. Masters?
Thanks. I just want to be sure everyone is aware that the Parent Advisory Council is having their large, their first large meeting of the year on August 31st, and they are hosting it, that one on Teams. And it is from 5:00 to 6:15 PM. And with each monthly meeting of the PAC, they're going to feature a different area of the work of MMPS. And this one, we're going to have our own Dr. Changus talking about our student dashboards and just providing more information for parents about how that's going to work. And then we'll, moving forward, September through November, we will have those meetings here in the boardroom, just prior to board meetings. And they'll be sort of a town hall style, again, focusing on different areas of interest as they arise. So please follow them on Twitter. It's MMPS, I'm not sure what the Twitter is, but it's MMPS Parent Advisory Council.
Sorry. Thought you might want to mention that, too.
Oh, yes.
I was about to say something, so I was going to ask you to do it. Sorry.
Thank you. So, yes, Parent Advisory Council. And we're still looking for some cluster reps for that as well. So if you're interested in getting involved, message me or message them on Twitter or Facebook. Also wanted to thank our Metro Council, and specifically, it was Dave Rosenberg that brought forth a resolution of the council supporting the work that we are doing here in Metro schools to keep children safe and keep our staff members safe by continuing with our mask mandate. So we were very appreciative of that resolution. I think that's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Player Peters? All right, Mrs. Elrod?
Thank you. Tomorrow is Overton's, excuse me for clearing my throat in your ear. Tomorrow is Overton's Meet the Teacher Night. It's from 5:00 to 6:30. You're able, as parents, to meet the teacher and a vote on Title I spending, so they really were lucky to come out. It's just a quick, informal, truly just meet them. They are asking that if you go inside of a classroom and you see that there's more than five families, that you wait and that you go into another classroom at that time to kind of make sure that there's not too many people crowding in one area. And of course, masks are required. Then I would also like to thank National Diaper Bank. They just donated a bunch of diapers and sanitizer to Cole Elementary. And also on the notice of Cole, I would like to thank Antioch Church of Christ. They provided not only breakfast for the in-service before school started, but they also provided the space and hosted us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Little?
All right. First, sending my condolences to the families in Humphreys County. Just looking at those pictures and the testimonials, it just, it hurts my heart in knowing that in Nashville, we experienced similar flash flooding. Also, as an announcement, I wanted to just bring attention to just some of the contracting. So for the next two years, as we talk about a lot of the ESER money, we're designating millions of dollars in public tax dollars to companies to help build Nashville beyond what our imagination can process. And I know we have talked about policies related to minority contracting on this board, and I hope that we can get the opportunity to take some of this new money and use that opportunity to go above and beyond, to be inclusive of all Nashville residents, but especially with minorities. Where property taxes go into record-high numbers, it is important that we work with the district and the mayor to not forget about the residents and families who help make Nashville the its city. And so that's my statement on minority contracting. And then going further, Andrew Jackson Elementary, as it was highlighted today, is having their open house, I think tomorrow is when we're actually doing the celebration of schools. Okay, great. So wanted to highlight them. And thank you close to the 100 parents who have called, emailed, agreed, and disagreed on this universal mask mandate and given us the patience to review the executive order. I've gotten a lot of calls from some happy, some angry, but I've definitely been in overtime pay. And then last but not least, I saw someone, I don't know if we talked about it earlier, but wanted to give a huge shout-out to the mayor's office and see Robert Fisher here as we talked about the digital features rollout. As I looked at the end of the presentation in the Teaching and Learning Committee, I saw that we're aligning our policies and also to see the mayor's office aligning their policies on how do we stay in line and keep our students ahead of the curve when it comes to surviving in Nashville physically and financially. And that's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Poopa Walker?
I want to echo John's comments, sending a lot of love tonight to the Humphreys County School Board. I can't imagine navigating a pandemic and the kind of devastation they experience. And so I know we're all thinking a lot about them. Big thank you to the MMPS team who put together the presentation tonight on advanced coursework and gifted and talented. I know that was a lot of work, and it was really well done. We had a great meeting last week, a community meeting at Hillsborough to discuss the future of the Stokes property on Belmont Boulevard. We are accepting creative ideas and input. Feel free to email me if you have thoughts. Hillsborough had a great borough bash, we can, before last, in the garage. Thankful for the parking garage where it's outside, but it's not outside, so you can do all kinds of things. And be sure to be here next board meeting at 4:30 to watch our students get sworn in by Judge Calloway and to be sitting up here with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Gentry?
I just want to share the upcoming community meeting dates to talk about building utilization, similar to what Ms. Poopa, Ms., yeah, Poopa Walker, is your name, right?
That is my name.
Okay. We have Buena Vista on the 26th, which I believe is a Thursday, at 6 o'clock. And it's going to be, the meeting is going to take place at Jones to discuss utilization of Buena Vista. Old Brick Church will be on September the 9th. That location is to be determined, as well as Robert E. Lillard on September 16th. That location to be determined as well. I have gotten outreach from a couple of organizations within the community that are interested in using some of these buildings to establish some programs that will benefit the communities. Some pretty really interesting proposals. I've encouraged them to put a few slides together and to contact Mr. Prophet to talk about an opportunity to share their thoughts on, at the time of those community meetings. And I would also ask you all to be in prayer, not only, as has been mentioned, for the families in Humphreys County, but for the family of Rip Patton, who's a Freedom Rider who passed away as well.
Dr. Gentry, can you restate the date of that Buena Vista-Jones meeting? Is that this Thursday?
It's Thursday, the 26th, at 6 o'clock, at Jones.
All right. Well, thank you for that. All right. First, I want to echo Mrs. Tyler's sentiments around the, about pencil and making sure that we sign up to support our schools. I would like to challenge my colleagues, if you have not already, maybe consider signing up to be a tutor. Just donate your time, talent, and treasure in some way, if you have the capacity. So just go to pencilforschools.org, sign up. It literally takes about a minute. I also want to thank the Pencil Foundation for the breakfast that they hosted and all the different ways that they support our schools. Please continue to support them as they support us. With that, there's also a Book 'Em Breakfast coming up in October. If you're not familiar with Book 'Em, they do a lot of support, offer a lot of support around our community by donating books to students, to teachers, to families, so please be aware of that. I would like to say on a somber note that we have lost at least two colleagues across the state and now at least one other high school student to COVID in schools. So we had that 16-year-old in Memphis that passed yesterday. I think we're going to be saying this a lot, our hearts go out to our colleagues, and they will continue to until we have our minds and hearts wrapped around this pandemic. But our hearts go out to his family. Then we had that 31-year-old teacher, Anna Pear Pro, who both caught it in an elementary school. So mask up, be careful, wash your hands. The Pearl Cone High School Partner Meeting that was scheduled for this Saturday, or the in-person meeting, has been rescheduled. Information will be forthcoming, and I'll be sure to share that out on the board floor. And Mr. Little, thank you for elevating your concerns around minority contracting. We're going to get you signed up for that new board member orientation. And then I would, I cannot wait to kind of follow your lead in making sure that we develop policies, that we review our policies around minority contracting. With that, be there no further business. This meeting is adjourned.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information about this and other programs, visit nashville.gov.